Okay, we're recording.
All right, I'd like to open the public or the planning zoning commission meeting for April 23rd. Bethel, Connecticut, start with the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic. Good, start by introducing our board.
Harrison Commission.
Eric Fordyall.
Paul Chanley Chair.
Kitty Grant.
Diane Ryan Commissioner.
Spur Braden.
And online we have joining us. Mr. Legnard up there.
Bob Legnard Commissioner.
Excellent, and with staff with us tonight, we have.
David Hall Land Use Coordinator.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, both intend to.
Bethke Magna Director of Planning.
I'm Anna Martinez Recording for your part.
Our ex officio members of the board.
Excellent, and I'll read it to record. Please note for the record that any personal devices used by commission members which for the purpose of reviewing materials on the Google Drive located in the town of Bethel website will not be used to communicate with each other, thank you.
Okay, so.
I'm going to recuse myself from this public hearing, turn it over to our vice chair.
Thank you.
For the record, I'm refusing myself also.
Okay, so we are starting with a public continuation of a public hearing, Tim Draper, A30G Affordable Housing, six units, nine Putnam Park Road. And I have to give you a letter to read into the record. Lieutenant Paul Chanley, Junior Chairman, Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission, Town of Bethel, One School Street, Bethel, Connecticut. Read Tim Draper, nine Putnam Park Road Affordable Housing Application. Dear Chairman Chanley, this office is representing Tim Draper in connection with the above referenced application for approval of a multifamily development under the auspices of Connecticut General Statute A30G. The public hearing was started on April 9th and was continued to April 23rd to receive further review and comments from the commission's consultants. Late yesterday afternoon at 4:44 PM, our consulting engineer received reports for which he would have been expected to respond in time for tonight's public hearing. As you will see from the side of the two reports, seven pages from SLR, 28 pages from War of the Seal. There's a lot, there is a lot of time required to properly respond. I am not sure why it took the consultants exactly two weeks to file the reports, however, they did a disservice to the applicant and to the commission itself to wait until the last minute. It is not a proper way to proceed to process, excuse me, the land use application. Under these circumstances, the applicant will not be able to present any information to the commission this evening in response to these reports and must reluctantly request a continuance to your next meeting for purposes of filing responses and proceeding to discuss them with the commission and the public. To the extent that the next meeting of the commission may fall beyond the original 35 days set for the completion of the public hearing, the applicant is granting a 15 day extension of time to which to complete the public hearing for purposes of this request. It's been brought to my attention that the commission's consultants have taken it upon themselves to enter upon the property that is the subject of the application without first notifying and getting permission of the applicant to do so. Though the applicant is always willing to cooperate with commission for site inspections, it should be kept in mind that this is an active construction site which has inherently dangerous conditions which require waivers of liability that were not obtained from the commission's consultants in their recent site visits. This needs to be avoided in the future and the consultants need to notify the applicant if they wish to make a site inspection and make appropriate arrangements to do so. I thank you in advance for your anticipated cooperation with the request to continue the matter from this evening's agenda in light of the late reports that we receive and I look forward to seeing you on May 14th, yours truly Neil Marcus. So with that being said, this, 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 I'm sorry, this application is going to be forwarded until May 14th or 15th?
14th.
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 14th, okay, having said that. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
I do have a question here, our, as a commission, did we respond to to this letter because there are some statements there that are grossly incorrect.
If there is time for commission comments at the end.
Um, I can make just a good straight up thing. Um, the question was no matter what the comments are, could the hearing be continued till May 14?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And anything pertaining to whatever the contents of the letter has to wait until that public hearings to be just to be discussed.
Thank you.
To be addressed though.
Thank you.
Anything pertaining to timing and whatever was brought off engineering since so on and so forth should be continued to the public.
To the public hearing, okay, thank you. Okay.
Excellent, all right, moving on, we're gonna move to the public hearing for Taj Realty.
Diane had, excuse me, Mr. Chairman Diane.
I was just gonna ask, um, so any comments of the public also would be continued to then or?
Correct, yes, that's correct.
Yes.
And the next name.
Okay, moving on to public hearing for Taj Realty LLC, eight Trowbridge Drive. Site plan review.
To appear April 12th, 2024 and April 19th, 2024, public notice. The Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on April 23rd, 2024 in Conference Room D of the Municipal Center, One School Street, Bethel, Connecticut at 7pm to hear the following, Joseph Semmely for property. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, go ahead.
Oh, for property located at eight Trowbridge Drive for a site plan to construct a one story addition to an existing building. The property can be found in the accessories records as map 10, block 23 and lot 150 dash 25. Links to review the materials can be found on the town's website. The public may send comments via regular email and email to landuse@bethelct.gov. Parking for the hearing is located to the rear of the building, Paul Chanley Chairman.
Excellent. Board's yours.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, before the applicant begins, just note for the record, my staff report, I don't know if it made it in the tribe or not, but it should be there, it's rather short in nature, just to remind the commission that, um, we've been working on this application since they came in and they received storage containers in regards to that last year. Um, we've also had two or three, three applications, meetings with the builder, with owner and with the developer, the engineers.
Excellent. Here we begin the afternoon.
Want me to read you?
Go for it.
Okay.
Sure, read the staff report and then we'll.
Okay, the planning is on the official staff report, April 23rd, 2024. Public hearing, eight Trowbridge Drive, proposal is for a 7,500 square foot one story building to an existing commercial building with 17 additional parking spaces. The property located at eight Trowbridge Drive consists of 3,568 acres and the industrial zone Coronet Machinery.
Three, four, five, six, seven.
I'm sorry. I'm looking at this, I'm thinking it's a karma, thank you very much, I thought that was loud, I wasn't much yet for it. Please excuse me, three acres, 5.68 acres in the industrial park zone. Coronet Machinery produces a wide range of machine parts and assembles government for government agencies such as the Department of Defense and the US Postal Services as well as various commercial industries. Taken from their website, with the proposed addition, the building would be approximately 28,000 square feet, a lot of served by public water and sewer. The views from the Northville Hills Department and Engineering have been received. The staff, the staff would recommend to have the applicant do initial presentation this evening and decide if sufficient information has been presented to close the hearing.
Excellent. Third time's the charm, floor is yours.
Okay, thank you very much, um, my name's Eric Kelly, I'm the contractor for the owner and, um, what they're trying to do is a 7,500 square foot expansion of their metal building warehouse for additional storage. Um, don't have much to say beyond that, so I would really turn the floor over to the design professionals who are joining us up there. Is there, yeah, I don't know how it proceeds from here.
If you like, I could, I'll walk you through the site improvements first and then Chris, I could turn it over to you, you could review the building improvement.
Sure.
Let me just share my screen.
I can use your name for the record, please.
Yes, it's, it's Joe Tramelli from KSCJ Consulting, I'm a principal of the firm with a site engineers. Uh, let me see. Okay, think I got that right, can, just let me know when you see the, the plan.
We got it.
Great, so, um.
Will you make it full screen?
Yeah.
Yeah, let me, um, sorry, I'm not familiar with the Google meets, does, does that make it full screen or no?
No.
Okay, sorry, give me one second. Uh, let's see.
Amanda, this may be something you have to do on your end, um, you, you may be able to guide everyone else.
Not sure.
Have a focus on what's being shared.
Oh, change the layout.
Apologies, I'm, is there? I'm looking for something. Three dots next to the heating up button, that might be in there.
A little bit better.
There you go, um. Did that get any better?
Yes, yeah.
All right. Um, okay. So I just want to make sure. I apologize for this. Oh. Did I just make things worse?
Nope.
Okay. All right. So the property, uh, as was mentioned, is eight Trowbridge Drive, it's the Coronet Machinery Facility. Uh, the existing conditions for the site, uh, for those of you that are familiar with it. Just want to make sure, is this scrolling through, I'm sorry, everybody. I don't see a scroll, I'm looking at the cover sheet. All right. Boy, boy.
Right, Eric, this is a, yeah, this is a.
After you.
You may have to.
No, it should be on his end completely, we can't do anything.
Thank you. Yeah.
Nisha's making it, Eric is making it bigger for us.
Okay, I'm going to, you can put in the middle, so you can go see it.
Unless you want David to do something.
You left the site now.
David's still there, they told him he's at home.
How I was going to go there.
I'm scared.
He's recording.
Yeah. See if David can put.
David, are you there?
I'm still here.
Do you want to see if maybe that I would present it and go over it, might be useful.
Uh, I can try, sure. Um, to whoever is sharing, if, if you could, um, stop sharing your screen so I can try to give a shout out at it, Mr. Tramelli, thank you.
Yep, sorry about that.
Okay, not a problem, let me see what I can do. Uh, let's see. I think it's, I think it's this one. All right, can everybody see that on the screen?
See what?
There we go.
Yeah, now Eric, Eric can go back to like the spotlight we have.
Yep. Is this better for everybody?
Much better.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Tramelli, I, I won't be able to see what it is that you are pointing to or that you're referring to, so just, just let me know as we go through this, okay?
Yep, and it's relatively simple, so, um, I appreciate you doing that for me, if you could just scroll up to the existing conditions.
Okay.
Thank you, so, um, as was mentioned, the existing facility, it's about, I think, 15,000 square feet in size, there's a, uh, the front portion of the building is currently office space, the majority of the building is, is manufacturing and, and the machinery, um, you know, assembly area and, and machine workshop. Uh, there are 37 parking spaces there today currently, uh, and traffic circulates, uh, off of Trowbridge Drive. And, um, I guess, you know, obviously, um, visitors and employees park in the front of the building and any larger trucks that have deliveries would circulate in a counterclockwise fashion around the existing building to the rear and then exit the same drive. There are two loading docks on the north side of the building, uh, so a tractor trailer, for instance, as it circulates around the rear of the building, as it approach heads towards the front of the property again, it could back into either of the two loading docks. And there is a smaller overhead, uh, door at the rear of the building that serves deliveries from vans and smaller box truck, box truck type vehicles. Uh, there's a outdoor refuse area, um, currently not enclosed, there's some dumpsters behind the building where you'll see in a minute, we're gonna be relocating those and enclosing them in a screen fence. And, uh, as was mentioned, there's two outdoor storage areas, those were, uh, approved, I believe, as part of a special use permit and we will be, uh, just simply relocating those but not increasing the storage area, uh, above what's there today. Uh, you'll see in, in the rear of the property, the, um, the trees highlighted in red are trees proposed to be removed for the expanded parking to serve the, um, the building. Uh, a majority of those, actually about half of those trees are four or six inches in size, DBH, the balance are, are greater, there are eight inches or greater. So it's about 20, 29 trees, eight inches or greater that need to be removed for the project. David, if you could just scroll to the, the site plan, the next sheet. Thank you. So you can see the, um, the lighter shaded portion to the rear of the, of the building, that's the addition, it's about 7,500 square feet in size. A little over 7,200 of it would be for the machine shop expansion and there are two small office spaces you could see in the, uh, the lower central portion of where the new building meets the existing, uh, you know, for, uh, office management staff. The, um, the building expansion is largely within a, an existing grass area behind the existing building and a portion of the existing circulation drive. Um, so obviously we needed to extend the driveway and move the circulation further to the rear and then we've added 18 parking spaces, uh, behind the building to accommodate the increase in parking that we need for the use. Uh, as I said, the existing parking count, there's 37 spaces, two of which are ADA accessible. Uh, we're proposing 18 in the back for a, uh, however, the two ADA spaces in the front currently don't have an access aisle. So we're gonna restripe those couple of spaces in the front of the building to provide the, the same two ADA accessible spaces with an appropriate shared access aisle. There is an A, they, there is an ADA compliant drop curb ramp that provides access to the front of the building and the office entry. So that, that will remain, uh, so, uh, the net gain is 17 spaces for a total of 54 where 46 are required. So, um, we provide ample parking with this proposal, as you could see at the, to the, uh, rear of the extended parking, that's where we're proposing to relocate the outdoor storage area to 20 by 40, uh, gravel pads that would be used to relocate the existing, uh, storage boxes that are on the property. And just to the south of the parking expansion, immediately off of the access drive is a concrete pad that would be fenced in and that would be used to relocate the, uh, refuse area. So that would be fully contained with this project. Uh, if you could just scroll to the next page, David. Uh, we've provided a stormwater mitigation system, infiltration system to mitigate the increase in the impermeable surfaces for the project with a, an emergency overflow connection to the existing drainage system that serves the property. Uh, we did receive comment this afternoon from your consulting engineer. I, I don't believe anything is, um, I, I would consider them all relatively minor and technical in nature, I don't see any issues in satisfying or resolving the, the comments that were presented. Uh, we do, as was mentioned, we do also have comments from the fire department, from the utilities department and the health department. Uh, fire marshal's office was, seemed satisfied with the layout, had no concerns. The utilities department did indicate the, uh, adequacy of existing water and sanitary services to serve the project. We understand we need to apply for a, uh, permit with their department. We see no issue in doing that and providing the, the information they requested for that. Um, Chris, I'll, I'll let you speak to the health department's comments. Um, but, you know, we, other than that, I think, um, you'll find it's a relatively straightforward project. Loading docks in the front will not change, the overhead access door, well, we will be mimicking what's there today, it'll just be moved back to, uh, provide access to the rear of the new addition or the proposed addition. I can answer any questions you might have, otherwise, uh, maybe we'll let Chris, um, go through the building itself and then we could hear your board.
Sure, let's, uh, let Chris go.
All right, I'll just share my screen, see if I can figure it out.
You're gonna embarrass me now, huh?
No, probably not.
Hey Chris, use your name for the public market, please.
Sure, Chris Raffielli, Principal at Studio Architecture.
Thank you.
I think I'm sharing this one. Let's see, anything happen, am I sharing?
Not yet.
There it goes. All right, are we there?
I think that's it, Chris.
All right, are we good?
Is there any way you could enlarge it to be full screen?
I can try, it's full screen here, let's see if I can change this.
Pretty good on our end, David.
Okay, very good.
How's that, is that better?
It's fine.
Yep, okay, good, um. Minimize some of this so I can make it a little bigger for you, okay, so this, this area here in the front is the original building, um, the area in the gray is the expansion, so this. Oops. So this line here is the beginning of the new building, working backwards. Um, the existing overhead door that is currently their exterior doors planned to remain, uh, which is here. Um, they'll use that for interior purposes for, um, inventory control. Uh, there's a, an act, new access door between the two pieces here. Uh, we've added a couple of offices here, their equipment layout will be against the rear wall. Uh, there'll be a new overhead door here, a new man door and, uh, secondary over here. That's for the, this pad here is for the HVAC and the secondary exit will be over here. So it's essentially in floor plan, just an extension in width, which is 125, uh, of the existing building and the new depth is six, it adds another 60 feet to the building with regard to the aesthetic of this. So this one here is the front of the building, the way it looks today. This addition will have no impact on the, the visual of the building from the street. Um, on the rear, which is the loading dock side, so if you're facing the building, this would be on the left. Uh, this piece here is the addition, it's a bit taller, same A-frame construction with metal panel, roof and siding. Back here, this is that new overhead door I was talking about and also the man door. Otherwise, the original building remains unmodified. Any questions?
Um, if you guys are, uh, have nothing more to present, I'll open up for public comment. There you go. Does anyone online offer any public comment or questions? David, you seeing anyone?
I'm not seeing any raised hands at this time, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I'll open up the commissioners.
I'm just glad they're able to expand. Thank you very much.
I drove up there, um, this is Diane Ryan, I drove up there today to just see what was behind here and there's a whole lot of pallets and other things back there, um, that are just out on the driveway area, or what are you gonna do with that?
That's, that's really the intent of the expansion, they've, they've gotten so big, they, they need more room so to store that, you know, the pallets and stuff, so really, we're kind of extending the building out so that they have an area to store their extra product or the raw materials.
Because right now it doesn't look like you can even get a truck through there.
Yeah, well, that we're, we're widening the road so that you can get a truck down, really, just really just taking the same thing and pushing it out 60 feet. And that will alleviate a lot of the pallets and other box stuff you see out there.
This is a curiosity, was this a pre-engineer, like a Markel Bruton?
Exactly, yeah. If the existing is a pre-engineer, we're just putting a sister right onto it, extending it right on there.
Excellent. Um. No, I, I have no questions, it's pretty straightforward to me.
No, it's like you answered the questions. Um, yeah, there were a couple of questions from Laura about like the number of employees and things like that and I'm sure that those will be given to her.
Information pertaining to that, and I did verify with SLR that, um, any issues pertaining to, um, height sizing, things associated with this site can be ironed out during the permitting process for construction.
That last line, the, the questions that are here, the basic questions that, that usually happen during that class.
One thing to remember with, uh, with this site and sites associated with it at the FJ Park Park, that the design of the original subdivision, um, all the basins and drainage associated with the park was incorporated and, yeah, so the building doesn't exceed 20% coverage, therefore they do not have to do anything as far as, um, major improvement to grant. And the applicants here is, has needs, um, good improvements to for initials, uh, management.
That's good, I'm fine.
Bob, do you have any questions?
No, expansion is good.
Yeah, I'd say, yeah, thank you.
I agree. Um, close this? Yeah, I'll make a motion to close the meeting, or the hearing, second.
Consent this, yes.
All in favor? All right, uh, this public hearing is closed. Thank you, John.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks.
All right.
Um, everyone had a chance to review the minutes from last week's meeting? Do we have any, uh?
Motion to approve the minutes on, uh, excuse me, April 9th, point 4.
Second. All in favor?
Um.
Four, five. Uh, invoices.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, before you proceed, do you have one minute? Is everybody here?
No.
So you need to see.
I got it, seriously, Mike. Right.
Um.
Was that last time?
Um.
Maybe it was Eric.
I didn't. Eric's going here, so.
I'm here.
I'll see Eric. I was here.
Mike was the one who was here. He's a full state.
Yeah, he's a full member, he's on my hand.
I will see Eric.
Can't keep track of all of it.
So he's gonna see Eric.
Yeah.
I'll see Eric, or Mike Dubraski. All of that, so, okay. Do you have a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
All right, should we go, well, everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Yes, yes, all right, no motion accepts.
Kitty and Bob did that.
All right, all in favor? All right, motion passes. Uh, any invoices, see one for new signs for $660.70?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve that payment, $660.70 for public noticing.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
All right.
Harry's, uh, work session, do you have anything for us, Ben?
Um, you just closed this public hearing, do you want to add that to the work session for discussion?
Uh, I don't mind adding it.
No, I don't.
Um. I'll make a motion to add the eight Trowbridge Drive Taj Realty LLC, uh, application to our work session, I'm second.
Second.
All in favor?
I am.
All right.
Post, resentence, motion passes, okay.
Well, it did make sense, I thought it was a pretty thorough application, uh, they answered all the questions that, um, the different fire department and health department, engineering, and, uh, so I, I myself think that would be a good for approval.
Anyone else? Anything? Comments, questions, concerns? Bob, got anything? Bob, got anything?
Nothing. I'm good.
Nothing. Um. I think it's a, uh, I think it's a good, um. Proposal, uh, pretty straightforward. Um. No problem, the expansion, bringing commercial entity sound is a good thing, so. I'm in favor of it.
So can I make a motion?
Um, in anticipation of, of this possibility happening, really due to your upcoming work schedule. And applications and public hearings, and, and you had mentioned. It should be prior to, I did put together a draft resolution for you to. Work from, if that will be helpful.
Do you have it?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much.
Do you have it, please?
You knew she had it.
She's on the job.
There may be one or two standard items that you always put in as a condition of approval. One, I can think of off the top of my head, as usually you say, if I'm maybe requested the amount for. In a, a Rosman seven issue contract, something just like that. Um. Some of the standard things regarding that. Did I give you one, Amanda?
You did, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Dan.
I have to get one to the applicants, I'm sorry. You go forward, so you can read the first paragraph and then the reasons for the approval.
Yes. Um, and this is the day. Right?
I'll put the date on it, yes. I'll do it right now.
Reading into the record, uh, letter from Bethel Vagna. April 23rd, 2024. Approve our site plan and special permit to construct a 7,500 square feet addition and associated amenities on property located at Eight Trowbridge Drive. Assessors map 10, lot 23, lot 159-25 owned by Tad's Realty LLC in accordance with the site plan entitled Eight Trowbridge Drive, Buffalo, Connecticut, dated March 30th. 2024, prepared by KSC Consulting Engineering, Joseph Serval, P E with the following stipulations. One through six. Just, I read, just, I one through six. Okay, one through six. But you, we usually read.
One through five, I'm sorry. So number six should not be there.
Oh, no.
It should be the new paragraph and you state the reasons.
Yeah. So one through five.
Thank you.
The commission has carefully reviewed the application and considers that the project will not be a document to the health, safety and welfare of construction practices. Shall be in conformance with guidelines as stated in 2024 Connecticut Stormwater Quality Manual. And the 2002 Connecticut Guidelines for Soil Erosion and Sentimentation Control. At the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. Second. Should we add now? That there should have been, uh, a number six for, for bond erosion and sedimentation?
I was gonna put that in there, yes.
As we're adding number six?
Yeah, add number six. For bond erosion and sedimentation. And then we add that all, any where addressed in these letters should be, yeah?
Then we have, you, you have a second? Second?
I, I second.
What, what are the circumstances?
No, I just read this. I made him.
I just want you to say, if I may. This is standard practice. This is not anything different from anybody else. We would do this for anybody and if you and you've been here enough. And I think, I think you know that we respect you, but we have to follow the rules.
No, no, that's fine. I have no problem.
As long as it's in general.
To speak of this in three weeks from now, because I will, I'll bring it out. I'll probably be to it and more than. Then that would be it then, because it's also about the town. Also looking at the plans and giving them on. Like, so we'll talk about that also.
If you want to talk about the process.
Well, that's what I am talking about.
But without mentioning examples that are presently in the public hearing forum. I think you have the right to do that.
Yeah.
Laurel Draper, forty-eight, yeah, Friday's last. You just mentioned that you got late information from SLR. It seems like SLR is late in doing everything. It's happened in the past on previous applications.
Happens every application.
Every application. With us, and you just mentioned it happened with something else today. This does not help. The applicants. Or the commission. When these people, you know, process a day before, you know, seven pages, twenty-eight pages, whatever. It's getting old, to be honest.
We're, we're. We're the taxpayers. Everyone in this room lives in Ethel, except I don't know who this gentleman is. Or I'm not sure if you.
I did.
Okay. We're paying a contractor to do work in a timely fashion. This is unacceptable. Would you have this? Would if a plumber came to your house, would you let him work this way? This is crazy. I'd get fired. Quite frankly, if they can't do their job in a timely fashion. We should be looking for somebody else. This is literally ridiculous. My, 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 my last application, you guys have one day left. One day. Sixty-four days. That's insanity. And quite frankly. It's not just that person. There's some other aspects that are town employees that do the exact same thing.
So it is the process. It's not just this application. It's been previous applications that we've had. And then speaking with other builders and contractors, you have the same problem.
Not to the extent that the Drapers do though. I'll tell you that.
Well, that's true.
So obviously, everybody knows the history. What goes on. This is not the first time in a year, multiple times a year. But it's a constant. It gets old. It really does. And I don't understand why the powers that be don't fix it. This is your town. You know, you go to other towns, we're laughing stock. That's, that's serious. I don't just work in Ethel. So.
And honestly, with all the applications that we've had. You know, it's just the, the infighting and, and the process itself. But it always seems to happen. So it's not like we're doing something nefarious or wrong. Or going beyond the bounds of anything. Because it always happens. So why the struggle? Why the fighting? Why, why the delay tactics and?
How, how is we as the board? How can we help? That's the board.
Um.
That's my question.
Okay, well, for starters, SLR. You know.
But we don't have any, I don't have any direct communication with them.
Okay.
So I'm saying is, you know, as a board, I'm asking you, how can I or the board as a whole help you? I'd like to, but I don't know.
Well, one of the things is. The town works, town employees work for the board. It's not the other way around. And a lot of places, almost every department forgets that. We don't work for the Board of Education. The Board of Education works for us. We don't work for the zoning department. The zoning department works for us. We don't work for the health department. The health department works for us.
So I would say, in that respect, you know, why are we? Why sometimes are we getting notices at four forty-five, the day before our next meeting? With twenty-eight pages, let's just say. Of comments from, let's just say, the health department. That my engineer can't respond to in a timely fashion. It's a delay thing. And, and it's not the first time.
So I always try to boil things down to make it easy. And so you're looking at ways to speed the, speed the process up, streamline it. Make it so you get information.
It should just be a process. This process is broken. I'm sorry, it's broken. I could, I don't know one person that's in business that can sustain a business like this. Now, I know towns aren't businesses, but they should be run on the same platform as a business. This isn't even close to it.
I can't give you an application for a project. On one day and expect it to be done the next day. And yet I get thrown. The same thing back at me. Okay, so I come with an application. And they come back at me one day before. I, I can't do that to the board. Or any of the employees. It's not acceptable. So why is it acceptable to do it to us?
I mean, you're seeing it at one field, but what if somebody buys a million dollar piece of property? And then they gotta sit on it for a year. Because of that paying taxes on it, paying interest on it, all this stuff. That's not my case, but it's case for other people. That's unfair. That's not even right, not even close. You know, so. As Kenny said. I don't know. I know what the problem is, but it's not my job to fix it. I'm not a public employee. I'm not, I'm not an elected official. But it gets old after a while, very old. I guess I said my piece, but. The letter that my attorney wrote.
Is a hundred percent correct.
We'll address that in three weeks from now.
Absolutely.
Um, one last thing I do have to say, and I, and I don't think this shoots into, into my, my application. Is, in all reality, there is a conflict of interest. With the town's SLR. And my, my engineer. And you're going, how is that happening? Well. SLR. Was working in Newtown. And my engineer was a review engineer for them. So there's a tit for tat right there. So there's a conflict of interest. Quite frankly, you know, without being rude, it would have been a pissing match if the two of them were here today. It's, it's, that's exactly what would happen. I don't think.
And we're stuck in the middle.
Yeah, you know what? And I'm the one who has got to keep writing the checks. It gets old after a while. But that's a serious consideration. You know, there's people that have to recuse themselves from my application. There's also people that probably, I, I actually almost wrote this commission before I even sent the application and. To have us all recuse themselves because that was going on at the same time. And I know that it, it doesn't make sense. And of course. The roles are reversed on this case. So the conflict of interest and what, what, what is it gonna do? It's not gonna do a whole heck of a lot.
But we're, we're getting deep as damn.
Yeah, okay, all right. So then I want to stop then.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
So I said my piece. We'll talk, I'm unfortunately more in depth in three weeks from now. So, all right, but I wanted to get my feelings out.
Not just for tax law.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment for tonight? Is there anyone online? Would you like to offer any public comment?
I'm not seeing any raised hands at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to adjourn?
Uh, no.
You can go.
I forgot. Oh, did you want?
Um, yeah, I had a request, thirty-six Stony Hill Road, which is the farms. I have a plan if anybody wants to take a look at it. Um, I have a request from them. Dealing with the front portion of the property. The front portion of the property is approved for twenty-two thousand medical buildings. Um, the people that are building the apartments to the rear of the property. Are looking, um, it's a very peculiar situation. It's one whole piece of property. The front portion is these, I'm just gonna use this as a visual so you can see this. So the front portion is a lease. Right? Commercial property is twenty-two thousand square feet. All right, so the owners of this property here. Are looking at the front portion of the property. Okay, okay. And what they want to do. Is. Look at this whole property overall. Put in commercial on the first floor with residential on the second and third floors. With the caveat. That the commercial on the first floor. Is they want to take that and create. Um. Storage. Storage facilities.
Self-storage.
Self-storage. For their people. Um, storage facilities. Of any type are not allowed on Route Six, number one. Okay, I made that clear.
Mm-hmm.
Um, their selling point, or if you can call it a selling point, is that they would make the whole project twenty percent of what. But you would eliminate the total twenty-two thousand square feet. That was originally approved by some of you on the commission and some others that are no longer here. So the question is, that's their question. I told them. My opinion, but I felt that it was better for them to hear from you what your opinion is. I will tell you that over the years, we have had many requests. For, um, storage.
Mm-hmm.
And. You as a commission have always turned it down. Because it is considered more of an industrial use.
This is the same people that came, you came before us, before talking about. Another option, right?
Yes.
Yes.
We said no.
Yes.
Yeah. It's almost the same, it's almost the same.
Correct.
Correct.
So the storage is only for the people who live there?
Yeah.
Sort of like, kind of crutches.
They're just trying to get away with not having any stories.
In their dollars. I, I, I can't think of anything more unattractive. But it's, looks like it's gonna be very lovely housing. Right on Route Six. I mean, when you said. Commercial on the bottom, I was picturing, you know, little stores or something of that nature, which would be a drawer or something. But storage units.
Nah.
No. I, me, I'm.
I, um, to put my two cents in. Um, I don't mind storage units. Um, because it's a great, um. Pack space for commercial building. It doesn't create a lot of traffic. Um, that being said, I don't like it for there. Because I really like the idea of the medical building out front. Um, still be thinking that there's gonna be a demand for office space of, of medical type. Um, I think that's a great spot for it.
Thank you.
Um, Newman's just, I think I said this last night, signing that huge deal, expanding.
Oh, yeah.
Banning their footprint more in this area.
They're ending up coming up with another company.
So. Um, there's a possibility they could be looking to expand there in the future. I don't know that. That's wishful thinking on my part, but. Um. I don't think it'd be worth it, in my opinion.
One of those buildings in the rear there, you should put some storage back in there if they want.
Yeah, and I would say, I don't mind storage, but I don't think it would be a proper for in the front. Right on the road. You know, if you wanted to put it in the back, but.
But it's also not, again. I understand it's not storage for a business or selling, it's storage for individual units.
It'd be a different tax, tax base.
Gotcha.
And they have projects.
Yeah. Yeah.
That was.
So I was just, I was speaking about the storage in general.
The storage.
My cousin does. I'll rent it to him for a hundred dollars a month.
I mean, was the whole premise of storage.
No.
That.
No, as far as. I would like to skip it.
Yeah.
Keep it the way it is.
Storage on Route Six.
I just said.
You couldn't even put everything else aside. Storage, you want storage units on Route Six, running on Route Six.
No, no.
That's what I need to hear. Okay, thank you.
Um, is that it?
Uh, okay, so let's talk about, a little bit about your next meeting before we adjourn. Just be prepared. Uh, the meeting on the fourteenth. An anticipation of trying to allow enough time for review of some previous applications that you have. Now that everything is gonna be backed up.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so on the fourteenth, you will be having a continued public hearing. You'll be having, uh, one forty Greenwood Avenue. And also eighteen Stony Hill Road. All the applications, all the information is in the drive. It's gonna be a late meeting.
Oh, yeah. Uh, is there any thought to moving that meeting to the GP room?
No. I don't think it's necessary for the, for the general public. My concern is, um, what I would like to do. Is in anticipation of what's going on, is I would like to see if maybe I can, we can juggle. One or two of the new public hearings and put them off till the end of May.
Good.
Because otherwise you're gonna be here till eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock.
Yeah. Uh, is there a thought to starting, starting that meeting at six thirty?
Um, if you, no, because they're all public hearings and they're all scheduled to start at seven o'clock.
Would it be any kind of a thought to have? One of them on an off night?
Um.
You know, like, they, they need to do. I, I thought tree like on, on, on another Tuesday night?
I'm CBA.
Oh, you're, you're, that's right.
On the third Tuesday, I'm CBA.
But I mean.
All right, so what I'll do is I'll see what I can, see if I can work something out. With the pending applications we have. And see if we can push it along.
Which, which public hearing do you think is gonna be the longest?
I'll let you know.
Which one do you think will be the longest?
I think the first one.
Which?
The one that's continued.
Oh.
That was really scheduled, you know, that's why we schedule it like this, so you don't get backed up. And you're gonna get backed up and I'll see if I can do something to fix it.
Yeah.
All right.
Would, would perhaps Mr. Draper come add it on another night?
I, um, I, I think that.
It was just continued to a eighth.
When you have, when you have an application, now, when you've already started an application during, to the, through the public hearing process. You want to keep that one on track following your statutory requirements. The other ones we can settle.
Maybe one of the other two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll see what I can do.
Yeah, that'd be great.
That's all I got.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Sorry, but.
Oh, I was just gonna ask, is there a possibility, because we do have three weeks of meetings, to do like a meeting at first Tuesday? Get one of these started a week early?
No, you've already scheduled their hearings. So it would be after. After the, um, fourteenth.
Then we have to, yeah, continue it.
The hearing would have to be after the fourteenth.
Open it.
So you would open it immediately, continue it. Then you can play with your dates and try to get. An off night or something like that.
Right.
Have you established your public hearing?
You like, you like something, Ken?
Yeah, okay.
And the never-ending. Process of educating me here on procedures.
We're never totally educated, Spur. I'm still learning.
I doubt that, but okay. Um, here are some comments that were read. That's part of our letter, some middle. As well as some verbal comments made. By Draper, which coming from a for-profit environment. Uh. Clearly dictate. A legal response is how is this handled? This commission. For somebody to claim that there, that there is a conflict of interest. And make it part of the record. To me, again, my environment, for-profit. I get my terms of all. How do we respond as a town? That's a serious allegation.
Um, what I'm going to do is I will notify SLR consultants. Um, of the. And I'll give them a copy of the video. They can review it.
Mm-hmm.
And, um. There's Tom Daley, which is one of the VPs of SLR, has been. A consultant with the town for many, many years. I'll forward this to him. Um, and they will respond accordingly if needed. There's a professional code of engineering. That has to be adhered to.
Right.
And, uh, I believe that any, if there's any issue with that. Um, then it'll be reviewed by. SLR. And if need be by the town.
All right, so that's point number one. Point number two. The allegation was made. That we as a board, prior members and maybe even current members. Um. Are treating this applicant with. Special. Procedures that are constantly and unequivocally delaying him. That's a serious allegation in and of itself. It says prejudice, bias. Um. There. Again.
If you're speaking, if you're speaking in general. Um. I can, I can discuss it, but if you're speaking in regards to this particular person. I do not care to discuss it on his time. Um, I'd be more than willing. And I'm more than willing to discuss with you procedures regarding how applications are administered and how they are reviewed. And if you care to know about that, I'd be more than happy to do that. Um.
No, I understand.
It's up to you all.
I, I.
There's allegations made. I'm not gonna address allegations.
That's true. Please.
Yeah. And again, this is. I'm not telling the board or the commissioner what to do. I'm asking.
I understand. You want to understand what the process is.
You shed some light on that.
Yeah, so, you know, there's a number of ways you might choose to look into this. Um, remember with any committee, you have the opportunity to a subcommittee. If you want to appoint a few people to go back and look at timeframes when things were done. You can certainly do that. Um, you know, veil yourselves of looking at the statutes and you might find that everything was within the statutory period. And I think that's the important part is like, you know, the statutes exist, right? Now, if you want to look at streamlining, how you do business, well, yeah, then move on and see if you can streamline a way to do it, but. There are, there are statutory times, like you said, it was one day before. I, I don't know how you make that any smoother. If SLR is behind the power ball sometimes or they're late, it's still maybe in under the wire. And that's the tricky part. So you as a commission should probably look at the first part. Number one, is it statutory correct? Number two, if you can speed it up in any way, that's up to you guys to work on as a board. So maybe. Somebody or something.
Okay, you will find with any application that is presented to a commission. And this is common and customary throughout the state of Connecticut and towns and cities. You do not get reports. A week in advance. The engineers, lawyers, staff are cramming. To get things done and prepare it for. That's the way it is. It hasn't changed. I do not know of any way to streamline that better. Than, um, how it is. The most I would tell you how the best way to streamline anything pertaining to an application. Or you want to submit something to the land use commissions is to meet with staff beforehand. You and I had a discussion on this. Pre-applications, reviews, that's when everybody in the departments get their hands in the pot. We design, we deal with concepts. That's when you get the hard work done. When it gets to you, it's a matter of you all deciding, is this appropriate for the town or is it inappropriate for the town? And when you do those things, it works. And when you do not do those things, you run into problems sometimes. That's just a general statement on what we do.
And, and, and I appreciate. Dan's comment that. We have something that's, that says. Do we look at the process and are there improvements that can be made? That's one part. But the other part is the one that says. Do we go back and we look at other submitted, not only from this applicant, but other applicants and say, this one tooks. This long, this one took this long. Eighty percent of it fall in reason and twenty percent for extraordinary reasons fall without. A lot of time. And avoid. A situation where some, and push back on a situation that claims prejudice. I mean, he didn't use that word.
I don't think that's something that we should be discussing.
Okay. All right, I, again, it's me trying to understand.
I know, I understand. But I don't think.
Paul, I have a comment.
Sure, go ahead, Slar.
Sometimes the, we, we, we get applications, you know, that. Are prepared. You know, to the nth degree. And then we get other applications that it looks like we're doing all the planning. For the applicant. And I think that, that can, that can have an, an effect. On the timing of that application, of how long it takes that application to go through the process. Is how much planning they did in advance to get to the point where it, it comes before us. And we don't have control over that. The applicant comes to us and says, I'm ready to go. In, in, in reality, he's not ready to go. That can, not, not just this applicant, but a lot of applicants do that, you know. Is how, what, what preparation they do in advance to getting to, to our table. Like that said, sometimes, you know, some of that preparation can be done. Before we even accept a thing for a public hearing. In a public hearing and things come up in a public hearing that, you know, nobody planned for. Someone brings up a comment at a public hearing, there, there's no planning for that. This is what comment that person brought up and what, that may have, has to be looked into by the engineer. Or, or, or by the developer himself. Thank you.
I mean, I told you that.
Um, I just wondered whether in each of these, um. Proposals, if we had like a cover sheet of what do we have? When do we get it? You know? How much are we still waiting for? And, you know, it does seem like sometimes you're getting things before. They're really ready.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean. Like for the Grobage Drive, I, I didn't see.
The process, okay, this is the process.
Okay.
Um, the process, when an application comes in, it receives the sheet. Tells us when we're scheduling the public hearing. When the application, I'm, I'm looking at it in man, if the man is just learning this. When an application is received. After it's reserved by the commission, it's sent out for referrals. We put in the date, what, what day it's sent out for referral. We let them know if there's a public hearing, what the date of the public hearing is, and then we request. A date for them to respond on. And it's usually the Thursday or Friday before a public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
In the history of me doing this for twenty-four years. There are certain departments that do not have the time. Or they, we know that we're not gonna be getting anything till the day, the night of the meeting, night of the public hearing, or a day or two before. These, I mean, that's, that's just how the way in the world works. Um, and that's, that's what happens. And so we keep track of it that way.
Mm-hmm, so you keep, so if you've done a pre-application with somebody and, and that shows.
That just shows up in my notebooks, yeah.
Because I mean, if that streamlines.
We had.
See that and quicker.
I've had discussions with the chairman. Of, you know, I think it's important for you all to know. Um, when we get to the point of, um, an application before you. I'll use, um. Uh, um. Uh. Oh, I don't care. Uh, I'll use, um, one forty Greenwood Avenue. You have an application coming in for a public hearing. Part of my report for that application is gonna be a history of how we got to. The point that you're gonna be seeing the application. And that is a series of pre-application meetings over three or four months. Dealing with architecture, site planning, drainage and all that kind of stuff. And that will be included in my report from now on, because Paul is the one that mentioned that to me. I thought it was a great idea. And I was just gonna start following through with that.
If, if I may add, Beth, you, you guys can use the, the application that you just approved on, on the dais as a reference. And right, one of the, the sheets that, it's in the very beginning of that application, it is. A sheet that keeps track of when each municipal agency submits their reports, and that's part of the public record.
But we, but internally, we do it that way. We do have a tracking system.
Mm-hmm, always.
I have a question about SLR.
Yes.
How far back did they get the information for them to make that report?
I can, I can't speak in direct, directly in dealing with the application or else to the public hearing.
It, it, as, may I provide a general response to that?
Yeah, no, no, thank you.
Tonight, there was a separate SLR comment.
Okay.
Yesterday last night.
Uh, H. Trobit Shriver, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
No.
Well, that, that's not.
I brought it on.
Go into that.
Okay, all right.
The H. Trobit Shriver, yeah.
H. Trobit Shriver, we got the comments from SLR today. This morning.
Mm-hmm.
Public hearing was scheduled for tonight.
Good.
Uh, the application was received in March. And we scheduled the public hearing, I think thirty or forty-five days after receipt. We got the comment from them tonight. I got on the phone immediately, or today, we got on the phone immediately with SLR. I also got on the phone immediately with the project engineer. And had a discussion between the two. I felt comfortable after speaking to both of them. They were minor in nature and could be resolved, no, no major issues. They could be resolved prior to the issuance of a building project. Am I correct?
Number one.
Trying to do this in Southern Westchester County. Oh my God. Take years.
Yes. I'm wondering if you can have dates instead of check, check marks.
No.
No?
No, that's part of the application. Those check marks are just to show that the application submitted, that material has been submitted. If it's a check. It's all part of the application.
I just thought if, if you had dates, then you'd be able to really show.
Well, we stamp things in. So if there's a, if there's revised plans, we stamp them in when we receive them. Unfortunately, we're not here on Saturday night to stamp the plans.
But I'm going to make this statement, some material was submitted on a Saturday.
I, I'm not, I'm. Okay. Anything else pertaining to the process?
I always hope in a can of worms.
That's how everybody discusses. And you learn from each other.
Exactly. Well, it is, it is. I mean, I, in, in, in thirty-one years, I, I've seen this happen. Not that, they have, not that many times. I mean, that everything is related, but there was always like a period of time when. The health department has so many applications or SLR will have so many applications. But by and large. I, I've watched this department run very well, very efficiently. And, you know, and when, when, when we, like tonight, when we send something out, it goes to engineering, it goes to. Uh, the health department, they go to the fire department, they go to the police department, the same exact places all the time. And, I mean, there's only so many times you can go check online or you can come in and look, look for yourself.
But you have to always remember too, we are different from New York. Our statutory time periods are shorter.
Right, are shorter, yeah.
You know, there's state statutes that we have to abide by for time periods. So. You know, and that's the bottom. Thirty-five days for a public hearing, you get one extension, you have sixty-five. You have a site plan, you have to have a decision within sixty-five days without extensions. Extensions can only be granted by an applicant. Not you guys.
We have.
So there are protections for you, but there's also protections for applicants too.
Absolutely.
And how do we compare to other towns that was?
If you want to do that research, I would suggest. Or if you know engineers and lawyers. Because my, I, I, again, just speaking in general, if there was an issue. The people that would be crying the loudest are your engineers and your lawyers. And I've had no. Comments or issues with any engineers or lawyers complaining about our process. I don't know if you have. Or, no, we're too new.
Notice if there were complaints from last year or so from engineers.
Yeah. No, you wouldn't. And map before him. You would have, it would have been an issue.
Exactly. And that would have come back and told us.
And I have no issue with anybody telling me, you know, there's an issue. I have no problems with the first selection, you know.
Tell you there's an issue?
Yeah.
But, but in many ways, I think that.
He would tell me.
If there was an issue, he should be.
And, and, and I understand, Mr. Chairman, by my. Part of the reason I, I'd say you, you guys kind of can look at it, if you're, it's your board. And I think what you're going to find is that the staff have always operated within statute. I've not heard anything out of that. And if there's any streamlining to be done, you know, you can talk about the process or whatever, but. It's, it's, there's a lot going on. And I think she made a comment too, that sometimes other departments hold it up. And, you know, we can work on that internally the best we can, but there's always a process and it can always be improved, but I just want you guys to be able to. Feel like you understand the process and understand. You know, you, you've operated within statute. There's no question. I, I've never seen anything outside of that or that. It's gone past the deadline. I've never heard of any of that.
So this was a good opportunity.
Yeah.
I'm in this discussion.
And it's helpful that you keep us within that timeframe.
Oh, gosh. I look at it as a random, random.
Truth be known, every developer would like to have their, uh, application approved the day before we get them.
That's a statute.
Alright, on that note.
Can I go back to?
Motion to close? Second? Paul Vayler? Motion passes.